Meeting the Mayor Mac Planning Board for Tuesday, February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. Uh, let me go through the usual announcements and remind everybody who will address the board to be sure and sign in on the clipboard on the table in front of me, make sure the microphone is turned on and speak clearly into it. Let me appoint Nelson into a voting position for, as a substitute for Lynn. Um, our next planning board meeting after tonight is March third, two thousand and twenty at seven P. M. in this room. Um, that completes the usual call to order and we are at the Planning and Zoning Administrators Report. Robert, is there any report tonight?
Yeah, just one quick item. As the board may recall, they had, I guess, established a zoning amendment public hearing for March seventeenth. Uh, Director Thompson's told me he's got a conflict on that date and is asking the board to reschedule for April seventh, if that is all right.
Suits me fine if nobody else has any reason to object and I guess it wouldn't matter if we did since it's a conflict and we wouldn't get our presentation either way.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Robert. Uh, if there's no other items from the department, are there any questions by members of the board for the department? Seeing none, let's move on to our next agenda item, which is item three. Chestnut Hill Properties LLC is the applicant and owner. Review for consideration of an amendment to a previously approved cluster subdivision plan to allow for six additional lots, increasing the total number of lots from seventy-one to seventy-seven. The parcels are located at Captain Bannon Circle and Ritter Bush Court, which are approved but not constructed roads. In the R one residential by map district, tax map five B, lot two, five, seven, eight, nine dash one, through nine dash seventy-one. Case Planning Board, two thousand and twenty dash five. Robert, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
No, I would just defer to Mr. Clinton to make the presentation.
Excellent. Ken, good to see you again, but please introduce yourself as you begin the presentation and then tell us where we're at with the project.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. My name is Ken Clinton of Meridian Land Services on behalf of Chestnut Hill Properties in this application. And, uh, we're here tonight seeking approval of an amended subdivision plan for Chestnut Hill for an additional six lots, which would change the originally approved from seventy-one to hopefully a new approved seventy-seven lots. As most of you may recall, back in November of two thousand and sixteen, if you can believe it, uh, we received planning board approval for the seventy-one lot cluster subdivision, which had four open space lots, served by public roads and municipal water and sewer. A significant condition of that approval was the repair and acceptance of some sewer issues that have been lingering for quite some time dating back to the construction of the, uh, school, the middle school at, and the Madeline Bennett. Since the approval, we have had some, some substantial difficulties in, in getting, uh, the project constructed due to that sewer and the conditions of approval. We've, uh, quite frankly, considered quite a few different options, um, how to, how to fund that, how to possibly sell the project, how to work around even considering individual leach fields as what, what if we had to go this route? Ultimately, um, nothing really has been working and, and the clock on the approvals have been ticking. Uh, in particular, state approvals, wetlands crossings and alteration of terrain in particular. Uh, and so we're, we're at a point where we had to really make something happen. And fortunately, um, recently this fall in November of two thousand and nineteen, the town, um, and the owner of the property reached a memorandum of agreement where the owner of the property would pay for the sewer repairs, but the town would actually do the work. So the town would, upon receiving the funds, uh, be able to start construction, repair that sewer in a couple of sections and then, um, the rest of the project would be ensured that it could proceed as well. That, however, is predicated on approval of six additional lots within the subdivision because what was realized, um, is that the cost of the original sewer dates back to two thousand and eleven. Uh, a company called Wright Pierce prepared a report and estimated the needs of the repair, which then drove the costs at that time. Well, I can tell you quite frankly, it's pretty much doubled since then and so, uh, that making the cost a substantial issue. So with the memorandum of understanding, if, um, if we were able to acquire six additional lots, it would therefore pay the difference, quite frankly, that in a nutshell. First thing we did after the memorandum of agreement was to file for and receive a variance because if you remember, this is in the R one zone by map, uh, as it was not at the time of the zoning, um, expected that sewer and water would reach this property. Uh, so we required a variance, uh, which was received December eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen for six additional lots, which brings us before your board. The plans that we filed basically are the same plans, same plan set as what was approved. Uh, the approach that we took was because the change or inclusion of six additional lots are nearly exclusively within the existing residential lots as previously approved, we didn't amend all fifty-eight sheets yet of our plan set. So what we submitted was, I think, the first eleven or so plan sets within the, uh, set. And upon, um, hopeful approval, we can then apply changes in lot numbers and street numbers, which really would be the only changes to the rest of the sheets in the set. But it's necessary to make sure that the construction goes smoothly and inspections and so on and so forth. None of the road design, stormwater, drainage, sewer, other utilities, none of that is changing and it's not required to change. In our evaluation, the number of roofs and driveways add an insignificant amount of stormwater into the system and our factors of safety in our design will exceed and can handle that without any additional changes or permitting. So where are these six lots proposed? All on our cover sheet, we have five shaded areas as I have on the screen. These are the areas I'll go and switch to a, uh, separate detail. I've identified them, uh, for my talking points, if you will, areas A through E. I just didn't mean to grab that, just a second. Area A is first. Uh, this was previously lots one and two. One and two is being converted in, from two lots into four lots. Lots sizes range from point four eight acres to one point one two acres in this area. Again, uh, no change to the adjacent open space, no change to the road alignment or, or any of the road features. Area B, slightly different scenario. Uh, area B was actually part of a four acre open space, not one of the two open spaces that are being conveyed to the town. It's being held again, uh, in a fractual interest by the lot owners uh, and with covenants and restrictions against development. However, um, lot B, we had always seen that as a, as a potential spot because quite frankly, it has a nice building area. Uh, its size, resulting size is point eight eight acres and the remainder of the open space that then flows down along Old Blood Road towards Madeline Bennett uh, is no longer four acres, it's three point one acres. The third area, area C, involves these three lots. What had been lots forty-one and forty-two now converts into three lots being seven, point seven two, point seven nine acres in size. Area D involves four original lots plus a tiny sliver, point zero seven acres of what had been part of the internal open space, lot five B seven. Five B seven had been seventeen point one acres of open space. Effectively, we're removing a tenth or point zero seven acres of that. So the common, uh, the combination of a sliver of open space plus the four lots results in lots sizing from point four seven acres to point eight six acres in that group. And then lastly, all the way over to where what we call Ritter Bush Court is on the corner, uh, is what I labeled area E. There were three lots here that we converted into four lots. They were known as lots twenty through twenty-two, resulting sizes on those lots are point seven nine acres and point eight five acres between that range. The reason why I'm sharing the acreage is, is so you have an understanding that we're not, where we were fortunate that some lots in the original subdivision had substantial enough size to absorb or fit in another lot here and there throughout the subdivision without resulting in, um, extremely small lots. And by means of comparison, uh, you may know the Meadowwood subdivision in town, Jessica Lane and so on. Um, the minimum lot size there is point two seven acres with sewer and water. The largest there is point seven one acres. So our smallest is point four seven as a result of this change and we only have two of those, point, point four seven and point four eight. Most of ours are in the, the point six, seven and point eight range, if not larger. Another comparison is Greenfield Farms. The smallest lot there is point two five acres, quarter of an acre. The largest lot there is point four, largest is point four with sewer and water. And that's even smaller than, uh, our smallest two lots. So when you realize what's been done in town with sewer and water, uh, and we look at not only the previously approved plan, but even with addition of six extra lots in the subdivision with substantially larger lot size, which just goes to prove that these are not with the addition of six extra lots going to be small and burdensome lots to hold upon. So that's really the, the purpose there. Couple of the things that I wanted to share is that, um, not only did we review engineering aspects of this design, but we also took a look at traffic, uh, just to ensure that six extra lots is, um, from our traffic engineer's perspective, extremely inconsequential and does not add any traffic or safety concerns to the health, safety and welfare of the general public. So we, we made sure to at least close that loop, uh, in case there was a concern on that. With that said, obviously we received staff memo. We generally agree with all the statements and most of the recommended conditions. How well, however, I will, uh, touch on the notes. This is a bit of a unique circumstance. Uh, we've, in my office and over the course of my career, we've had amended subdivisions in the past. Uh, typically, they may not be this, um, detailed and this complex with this many notes. I personally felt that there was a need for some consistency and clarity about the notes that were part of and incorporated with the original approval. That's why I separated and distinguished any new notes under the amended note section. And instead of having the notes read one, two, three, four and so on, I chose letters, so the amended notes have A, B, C, D and E. I felt it was important to carry the consistency of the previously approved notes into this amended plan and then only try to focus on the five notes that reflected the current changes. So somebody could come to the registry of deeds, get this plan, see all of the notes that were part of the original approval and then focus on the five notes, maybe six after this meeting, um, of what has changed and be able to focus on what's changed and be very clear and concise. Robert and I haven't had a chance to talk about, um, each of our views from the staff standpoint or my standpoint. I'm sure if we were to, uh, discuss this, if the board was so willing to grant conditional approval and Robert and I had a chance to sit down and talk about it, we could reach a resolution. If you felt that was reasonable administratively, I'd welcome that opportunity. I've had a couple of options in my head, perhaps that might work and satisfy some of his concerns, but, uh, I see it as a very minor item. And quite frankly, if he was insistent, I would just defer to what his request was. But we can, uh, see how this moves along. So with that said, I find it to be a fairly simple matter. Uh, when I first was asked to look into this, I equated this as a, basically a, a five area lot and adjustment because I really feel that's effectively what it is, but technically it's part of a larger subdivision. This is the best method, the amended subdivision plan is the best method and means to do it. Again, our entire fifty-eight plan set, uh, fifty-eight sheet plan set would be resubmitted with all the proper lot numbers and street numbers because unfortunately you slip in one lot at the very beginning and lot two is no longer lot two and lot three is no longer. So we have to just go through, uh, a drafting exercise, if you will, to renumber everything. So if, uh, staff or inspectors out onsite with the plan and profile sheets and they're in front of a lot, it's the correct lot number that they're referencing is not something from the previous approval that could cause confusion. So. Uh, with that said, I don't want to belabor this anymore. Uh, I'd be happy to answer questions from you or anybody in the audience.
Mr. Chairman, would you entertain a point of order, please?
Yes, please.
Do you have enough for a quorum?
We do.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, because the town council has a agreement with the developer and with my presence being here potentially a possible conflict of, of interest as it relates to that particular agreement. Uh, because you do have a quorum, I will be recusing this all.
Thank you, Bill. Um, Ken, thank you for your presentation and, uh, just to cover a couple of procedural items. Um, we are, uh, not obligated to take up the question of completeness as this is an amendment to a previously approved subdivision. Um, you've requested no waivers as a part of this amendment. Um, I do have a question about previously granted waivers, if there were any, just to be reminded of them. And then, um, the other procedural comment is that, um, to the extent there should be or could be discussion about the number of lots, since the ZBA has granted a density waiver to permit seventy-seven lots, um, that particular question is not, uh, before the planning board. Um, we're looking at whether you meet the subdivision regulations presuming that seventy-seven is the amount that the CBA has given to you. Uh, with that, remind me of, uh, waivers that existed before and whether they were granted, if there were any?
Yes. Uh, I zoomed into note number thirteen and it notes that we had four waivers granted, um, relative to road grades, side slope for the roads and a section of sidewalk. So those were, uh, note thirteen granted on six two of two thousand and fifteen.
So on the fourth waiver regarding sidewalks, it looks like we, uh, waived a portion of them, but I assume that there will be some sidewalks in this. Remind me what that?
Yeah, the, the section of sidewalk that we sought the waiver was over a wetland crossing at the very, uh, entrance, the southerly entrance off of Old Blood Road. With the height of the road at that point and the side slopes required any additional width, uh, for a sidewalk that would go down to a road without a sidewalk was going to increase the wetland impact to, to agree that we already had a fair amount of square footage in those impacts and DES was looking for us to reduce them. Uh, so given the fact that the internal loop and all the way down to Madeline Bennett, uh, to the school would be having, would have sidewalks, that was granted by the board, I think is a reasonable amount of sidewalks for the project.
Thank you for reminding me of that. As you went through it, I remember the, uh, very detailed explanation of vernal pools and various turtles and salamanders and things that were there and the changes in the slopes that would be necessary, side slopes if we had widened the road to allow a sidewalk there and how that would create some headaches. So thank you for reminding me about that. I am glad that most of the subdivision will have sidewalks available to it, um, built in there. I think, uh, one of the points that you've made is that other than dividing up some of the existing lots in a little bit different way or perhaps this one additional lot in area B, it's, um, not terribly different than the things that we have seen before.
My simple response is no. Uh, to, for, for most people to look at this, uh, look at this plan and look at this cover sheet versus the other one.
I had to side by side compare them. I was like looking back and forth between here and here.
True would notice it and, uh, and again, when we had created these lots, we, we knew that they were larger than most sewer and water lots in town, but it also seemed to, to fit. So I'm, I'm very pleased with how these five areas absorbed six extra lots. It, it was, uh, it worked out very well.
Other members of the board have comments or questions about the presentation that's been made and ultimately we have to open up the floor to a public hearing at some point and find out if we've got any other, uh, butters or citizens, but Nelson?
Yeah, Bob, the first thing I'd like to hear is a little discussion between the applicant and Bob regarding this note situation. Um, why do we want him to consolidate the notes? What he said made sense to me to separate them, but maybe you've got some other reasons I didn't see.
So Tim approached me with the concern when he was putting the memo together and I agreed with him that without hearing from the applicant when we were doing the report, uh, we thought it was kind of a confusing approach when just taking a look at it and thinking, oh, there's these two sets of notes on here. Hearing Ken say it tonight, I think lends some credence to why he did it that way and I, I agree with him. If the board is okay with it, uh, if you were to conditionally approve this, that we could kind of talk it out administratively and, uh, kind of work, uh, put it, put together a package of notes, uh, that makes sense for everybody.
Okay. What he said made sense to me to separate them.
And I agree with that, but I don't want to also step on Tim's toes as the author of the memo uh, by changing the way and agreeing to something because I know he, he was concerned about the layout when he first looked at it. So I, I don't want to just say, oh, no, well, Ken explained it and it's all fine. I'd, I'd like to get his input, uh, as part of the a conditional approval process.
Okay. Otherwise, uh, I think he's answered my questions about the rest of the, the rest of the plan, which isn't here before us tonight. But, uh, administratively, you'll have a lot of detail to go through when the new plans come out because there's a lot of, a lot of pages get changed, right? And, um, the sidewalks, I'm glad to hear they're untouched, so that was a concern for me and, um, oh, I, one more question. The, this sewer line that we're rebuilding here, is this line sized to carry all of this plus the Madeline Bennett School, uh, or not, the, the middle school and whatever else is foreseen in that neighborhood? Is that pipe big enough? Are we doing the right thing here?
One answer, yes.
Oh, okay.
The, the, the design of the sewer main in the existing public roads of Babusak Lake Road and then even though Madeline Bennett is not accepted by the town yet, um, that was pre-sized back when, um, the school was being designed as a main for this area of town.
Now, you're talking, you're talking the Madeline Bennett line?
In Babusak Lake Road and Madeline Bennett.
Oh, both. Okay. That's what I wanted to be sure, that the line in Madeline Bennett has the capacity. We're not.
And actually, that's part of our original, um, approval process through the sewer department.
Yeah.
As well as the state of New Hampshire.
Yeah.
So, yes, it, it's
Okay.
More than can handle what we're proposing.
So to be clear, process wise, I can, I, I don't mean to obsess about process. Um, but so the board knows what we're doing and I'll say it out loud to make sure everybody else thinks that's what we're doing too. The original approval that we did a couple of years ago required the off-site improvement of the sewer, um, to be carried by the applicant. Since the applicant's now got a, a parent agreement with the town council to handle that sewer differently, our vote here essentially excludes that off-site improvement from this
Correct.
site, this subdivision approval. So that is a, an amendment of something that was required in the old approval would not be required in the new approval because it's being handled in a different way through the administration, uh, from the town council. And I don't have any complaints about the way it's been handled. I think it's a perfectly fine way to deal with it. But we should know that one of our previously required conditions of approval was this repair that is no longer going to be a condition of approval because it's going to be dealt with separately. Does everybody, applicant agree with that?
Yes.
Exactly what we're doing? Okay, good. Other comments or questions about it? Because it's not necessarily part of our approval, it's interesting to know about it, but, um, it's excluded, so. Um, except for the stuff that's internal to the cluster subdivision and in their roads. Other comments or questions? Any of butter or interested citizen want to weigh in on the proposed amendment? Going once, going twice? If there's none, um, no, come, no? If there are no public, uh, comments about this, um, then it is appropriate for the board to either continue to debate with the client, with the, uh, applicant or, um, uh, consider what final action the board might be willing to take. Robert?
Uh, Tim fortunately is watching the meeting online and, uh, he heard the notes discussion and his statements are that, uh, he believes they should be revised as recommended because he feels the plan set, uh, since it's being recorded, it needs to be able to stand on its own and as a result of that, he would like to stand firm on his recommendation.
What was the last thing you said? I didn't hear you.
He wants the plan set notes to be revised as he recommends in his memo.
Okay.
I understand both points of view and I think that having one unified set of notes without sort of wondering whether there's a hierarchy and one controls over the other probably does make some sense. Plus it seems like not the hill to die on, so get her done. Are there other, uh, comments or questions of the applicant? Uh, if not, is, uh, the board prepared to take final action? Oh, I'm sorry, Nelson. I didn't see your hand up.
Oh, okay. Well, I was just going to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Please do.
To, uh, I think the motion will be to, uh, accept the proposed changes to the, uh, Chestnut Hill Properties Plan reflecting the agreement between the town and the applicant and, uh, showing the changes of the, in the number of lots, uh, adding seven, from seventy-one to seventy-seven. And, uh,
So my attention's called to the staff's memo, which says that the potential motion will be to grant conditional final approval of the application with the following precedent conditions to be filled within six months of signing, et cetera. And that probably does encapsulate some of those other things that you mentioned.
Better than the way I phrased it.
So it is, is there a second for that motion to grant conditional final approval?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Paul. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So four, zero, zero, the amendment passes, uh, subject to the conditions in the staff memo. And, uh, on that note provision, you guys can work that detail out, although it seems like maybe we already have. Thank you for the presentation. Um, thank you for the creative approach to the subdivision that allows the town to cure a septic, uh, line problem, um, that was not created through any of your effort, um, but was, um, required in order to provide service to your subdivision. So, um, it's, it's a good solution to have that kind of cooperative effort. Anything else that you need from us tonight?
No, no, thank you very much. Appreciate it and thanks for coming out in the poor weather.
Glad to do it. It's actually, the rain's not so bad now that it's not slippery at least.
It's not. Not slippery.
The sidewalk is slippery.
The slippery sidewalk out there is lethal.
Don't worry, not to worry.
We're happy to do it for you, Ken.
All right. Item four on our agenda is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. Does anyone have any discussion items?
Um, just a quickie, Mr. Chairman. I was bored out of my good, so I read all about this three man sort of commission that's being established by our worthy friends in Concord that will have the ability to override anything we say or do. I mean, obviously if our worthy friends in Concord say we're going to have it, we're going to have it. Um, I'm worried about it and I'm wondering whether we can at some point in time have some detailed instruction, what it really going to make, because it strikes me that if we really don't like something and dig our toes in, the developer can go up to these three men, give them each ten thousand dollars and they'll get away with it.
I don't think they quite will work that way, but, um,
Well, it's the way I believe things work in, in, uh, anyway, that's.
Yeah, this bit of legislation was, um, uh, initiated last term, uh, in January of two thousand and nineteen and it fumbled around and ended up getting jammed into the state's budget as it was adopted. Um, and there's still some sense that there may be a, a way to remove it or some amendment to that that may do away with it, but who knows how that'll play out. As, as of now, um, it exists.
Comes into effect on June the first.
It exists. Um, it only deals with the questions about workforce housing, though.
Oh, okay.
Not commercial site plans and not subdivisions that are not related to workforce housing.
Thank you for the clarification.
Um, it does allow the board, that board in Concord to hear appeals in the way that the court would with some limited jurisdiction and some expertise. the court would, with some limited jurisdiction and some expertise. The board is supposed to be constituted of a, of a lawyer who somehow has practiced in subdivision and land use development, but is not currently practicing in that field, so they wouldn't have a conflict of interest. Also, an engineer that somehow magically has experience in subdivisions and land use, but is not currently doing so anymore. Maybe it's, maybe those are retired people, I don't know, and I think the third one was a judge or some, a retired judge. I don't know where they're going to find these unicorns that are going to fit this requirement on the board where, and, you know, that, that want to work 20 hours a week for the state to do this.
Hence my comment about the money, but anyway.
I think there's, there's plenty of ways the thing was misguided and, and all of that, but it is what it is. I, I didn't support it. Our firm, my firm privately testified against it, because we thought it was dumb. It seems to have some support from places like the BIA that think that developers are being limited in their ability across the state to develop properties because of obstinate boards, which make appealable decisions, but the cost of appeal and the time to go through an appeal is so burdensome that it ends up essentially blocking permanently some proposed subdivisions to come forward. I think that it would so rarely affect us, because I don't know the last time that we took a subdivision of some substance and turned it down. We shape them, we amend them, they get the sidewalk done a little bit differently, you squeeze in an extra lot in the end, and I- So when, when are we going to be appealed into that? Now, it does allow any affected person, and that was one of the stupidities of this regulation, was that an butter opposing a project can use this as a sword as well, because they didn't draft it properly. And I, you know, they shouldn't have drafted it so that it was just one, one side can appeal to this board and the other side can't, but it'll be a sword as often as it is a shield, I think.
Okay, thanks, sir.
I, but good, good to notice it, and I'm glad that you did. I thought it was a terribly worded concept. It wasn't functional, it costs money. If you want the court to go faster, change the law so the court can go faster, or cheaper, or whatever, fix the court system, don't create little private administrative agencies that act as little-
That's what I was very concerned about, that effectively, we're being, it could be overruled by a triumvirate of people who supposedly know something about it, but could be perhaps persuaded, hence by comment on money. Anyway, let me just leave it at that, but I appreciate what you've explained to us.
I, I have little doubt that the Ethics Department of the state wouldn't allow someone be taking bribes from these kinds of things, but-
Oh, God. Oh, dear, oh, dear.
I have more confidence than you do.
Having just heard about the, the legislator in Massachusetts who took, I don't know how many million dollars for his girlfriend, I, I hesitate to agree with you on that.
You know, Massachusetts is a bit of a different state.
Oh.
It's, it's got a little different approach to it. We are, we don't even pay our legislators a salary, much less, uh, try to, anyway. I, I think it is a concern, I think the world would be better off if the thing found a way to go die somewhere, but if, at the other side of the spectrum, as to Merrimack itself, probably won't mean a whole lot.
No.
For other communities that are a little more constrained on their development, or a little bit more unfocused at reasoning through their decisions, they may find it to be a bit of a headache, because it's intended to take boards that are making irrational decisions and prod them into considering a different approach because of a relatively easy appeal. I'm not sure how easy it'll be, though, because you're still going to come with lawyers and arguments and plans and engineers and, and, and traffic guys and the whole rest of it. It's not going to be cheap, but, or whatever. Any other discussion items? I don't see any. We have the minutes of February 4th, 2020, in our package. What do you think of that?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes as printed.
Is there a second?
I will second.
A motion and a second? I don't have any comments on the minutes of February 4th. If all are, no other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 4-0-0 to approve the minutes. That concludes the business on our agenda, and we are set to-
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Second by Nelson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? We are adjourned. Thank you very much for the work, and don't forget to turn the microphones off.